Can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Christensen.
Here Cunningham, here Whitworth.
Here.
Brian Eck, Hollenbeck.
Here.
Cumbier.
Here.
McNally.
Here. Okay, stand and please recite the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Lisa, proof of posting, how do we do?
Agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, Cambridge Post Office, hometown bank, and the village website.
All right, okay. Public appearances. Everybody is scheduled for something on the agenda.
Everybody here for something? Think so?
All right. I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any questions? All right, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right, moving on. Reports, I'm gonna, in the interest of time, I want to talk about two things. Number one, Joe Perisi, our Dean County Executive, was in town last week, and thanks to Mr. Saylaw for coordinating that. We had a chance to go and meet with four of the local establishments, including Kaleidoscope Fibers. We went to Avic Gardner, we went over to CART, and then we wrapped it up with a trip over with Mark's Garage. And we were talking about their program there with Rawhide, Boys and Girls Camp. And I thought we had a good meeting. Karen, did you, anything come out of that that you wanted to follow up on? Or any comments you wanted to make?
Just want to ask you when the Economic Development Committee is going to get started.
Did just send out an email today to members who are looking the third week in November.
How do you get that?
All right. All right. Bob, do you have anything on the trip that was here by Mr. Perisi?
It was excellent. You know, a lot of it was discussion about economic development. And hopefully, you know, I asked, we asked Perisi if he could help facilitate a thousand bucks from maybe one of the utility companies or contact. We should follow up with him and see if he found anything to help the village fund the MADREP 101 Economic Development Course for you. It was specifically designed for trustees. So, otherwise, it was a great, it was a great tour. Well, we had a great group out. We all, we had an open discussion at the Galleria, and it was well attended. So, I think it was a great success. And he enjoyed himself.
Okay.
And learned a lot about Cambridge.
Give them a cross view of some businesses that you wouldn't typically see, and some of the altruistic activities that we're involved with. Okay. The other item I want to just speak about briefly, it has to deal with our fire and EMS commission. And we're going to be tearing into this a little bit more. We had a meeting, and our, our portion of the budget, this is a total of 572, but our, our chunk, I'm sorry, 677, our chunk of that will be $169,893. That budget has been approved, and then it was just the spending allocations. So now we have to...
How much was that, Mark? How much more is that from last year?
That is a 19.399% increase.
What in dollars?
The dollars is $27,603. A couple of notes. One, the, they're not going to take out of their capital reserves 50,000, which was negotiated last year, and that is not going to be done. And the other thing is, this Thursday, there will be another unit being delivered here to Cambridge, a new fire truck. And it'll be in the afternoon. I just don't have the time yet. So, we will be working on this budget, though, trying to figure out, you know, I know, how to make this one work. So...
May I just give a footnote since you're speaking about it?
Yes.
So, the, an additional $50,000 was put into reserves in the budget. So, otherwise, the budget increase was from, it was, it was a very low percentage of the actual cost of fire protection and EMS protection. But that 50,000 from last year is from the reserve, and another $50,000 to put into reserve raises the budget by $100,000. And that's where this, that's where that 19% comes from.
Wow.
And, and then the, the, the $81,000 that came from the foundation, which is to be used exclusively for the new truck, pays the first year's lease agreement plus sum of 2021. So, you're not having that burden this year, and you'll have half of that next year. Those are just, those are just real highlights of the budget.
And that's all I'm trying to do. Okay. We will be now working on how we're going to make this work, and what that does to the Village of Cambridge. Okay, that's my report. Let's move on. Library report?
For the library, we had an update, well, on hi, we hired a new part-time person at libraries, got that done. We just reviewed the 2018 audits. Our, we talked about a preliminary budget, and then I believe Joan has since revised it. Have you gotten the revised budget? Okay. I just noticed she sent me an email, so once I look at that, I'll see if we can forward that on to you, Bob. And then, that was really about it. Patty, is there anything else you, oh, you went at the meeting this time, so, yeah, yeah. There wasn't, nothing else big going on. There'll be lots of library programs going on, so make sure you check out the library website or Facebook to see what's going on at our library.
All right, thank you. Moving on, Personnel Committee.
I'm here.
Pardon me?
Yeah, you want to talk about personnel? You were there.
No, I'm, I was observing. I wasn't actually on the committee, so I'll let you.
Well, the big thing was, is we talked about, all the employee reviews have been done, and it was the consent of the Personnel Committee to recommend to the village board a 3% across the board increase in wages for next year. There's some talk about going a little higher, but we figured 3%, and that's really, we didn't, the previous year, we did not have a raise. So, it was time, if we want to continue keeping these employees and not making them go off, go look for a better job, we need to start doing something, otherwise, we're going to lose them.
Okay.
That was really the highlight of the Personnel Committee.
In the health and dental, which are on the agenda tonight.
What is that?
The health and the dental renewals.
Yeah, we talked about health and dental and stuff like that also.
Susan, did you, anything on personnel that Ted didn't mention?
Ted pretty much got it.
All right.
Short meeting.
Number of people had good reviews, and, you know, that's encouraging.
We have a very good staff.
So, we appreciate that very much. All right, Public Works Committee. We're going to go back to you, Ted.
I guess I was on that, too. And we, we looked at the budget for next year and went line by line through the budget. We've made some changes here and there, but it didn't really increase that much. He also wanted, wants to lease another, another mower for the cost of around $3,000 a year. And that was about it.
So, I'll be recommendations to Audit and Finance.
What is that?
There'll all be recommendations to Audit and Finance.
Those are, yeah, those are recommendations to the board, so.
Okay, thank you. Village Office Updates, Lisa?
After the audit was complete, where Barbara's been working on bringing all the accounting balances up to date, entering all the final 2018 audit entries, working on the accounting and reconciliation, getting prepared for the budget, including the standing committees, so we've looked at police, fire, courts, public works, personnel. Those will all be brought to Audit and Finance, beginning the special assessment work for the taxes. Letters have gone out for the pass-through water and sewer, giving them the timeframe to pay otherwise. Those will be put on the tax bill for water, or for pass-through water and sewer. Also, reviewing and updating the special assessment list for trash and recycling, in conjunction with the, getting ready for the switch-over for Badgerland taking over the trash and recycling. We had to provide them with a spreadsheet with all village residents. They will be sending out letters. They should be going out this week, giving people the option. It will be a 95-gallon bin for both trash and recycling, unless you specify otherwise. So, those letters are going out that... So, in conjunction with getting that list, we were comparing to the old special assessment list, cleaning it up, adding new properties, some that may have been miscalculated in the past due to the number of residents, if it's a duplex, fourplex, whatever. So, cleaning all that up. The contract with them has gone to Mary Belling. She's had a couple comments, so we're just finalizing, looking at that. Quarterly state federal reports are being done. We received four responses for the RFP for the auditing services, so we are putting together comparison of what's included in each of those. That will go to Audit and Finance in the next week to look at, to bring back to the board at the next meeting.
Okay. Questions? All right, thank you, Lisa. Bills, looking at a stack of these, we've got $79,187.56.
I'll make a vote, motion to pay the bills and set them up.
Second.
All right, questions, Eric?
Lisa, it's got some stuff for the remodel still on here, so how far along?
That is the last payment for Joe Daniels.
Yeah, but there's also like the phone lines and...
Yep, there was the final of the new phone system. We should be receiving one more for the architects. They just signed off on the last payment to the contractors. Could be a few more little things that we're still just getting for the office, but those are the major ones.
Okay.
The last for the architect will be coming in.
Do you know what the, there's a brush cutter rental?
Mm-hmm.
Bob, what was that?
That was out by the ponds, the fishing ponds. There's a committee that was set up for the fish ponds of all the groups involved. That was to clear cut around the ponds where our machines can't get in. The COWC will be paying back $500 of that. So, in conjunction with cleaning up, helped by them. So, we will be getting reimbursed for part of that.
The strikes, gives me a question. Have we sent a bill to the fire department for the mowing of the lawn?
I don't.
I got grabbed.
I think we may have. I think we sent a couple years at once.
Three years.
Because it hadn't been sent.
Which was not in our budget.
You didn't carry it over from the prior years?
Of course not.
Building the plan for the mowing.
Okay, as long as we, we're sending out bills a little more often.
Yeah, a couple months back, we...
Okay. All right, thank you.
That's better than $27,000, though.
All right.
Oh, sorry.
Nice comment.
All right. Okay, we have a motion and a second for payment of the bills, but it is a substantial amount, so can we have a roll call?
Trustee Cunningham.
Yes.
Whitworth.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Cumbier.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Did you say how much the total was?
Yes, total is $79,187.56. All right, thank you. All right, moving on. New business, Chamber of Commerce update. Ms. Karen Anderson, how's our chamber doing?
Good. This is a spreadsheet of our budget.
Thank you.
For the $10,000 that you gave us in our collaboration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have an extra copy? Thank you.
So, the task of this spreadsheet is, are the installment payments from the village to the chamber. And then, as you go down the spreadsheet, you can see the expenses. So, I'll say right off the bat that the payroll expenses are not anywhere near half of the amount of the money that was allotted to us. We will approach half of the amount spent in marketing promotion expenses, but with a 15-hour-a-week employee, we can't make that budget work. We can't ma, you know, we can't spend the half of the $10,000 on budget, on payroll. And the agreement was written up that $5,000 was for payroll and $5,000 was for marketing expenses. So, we will probably have a surplus at the end of the year, and we've got some ideas on how to spend that going forward, but I wanted to discuss it with you guys, since it's basically your money. First would be Bob's idea about hiring MADREP to do the $1,000 Economic Development Training. We, the chamber has been talking about that with the village and amongst ourselves for at least the past two years. So, we'd like to take $1,000 of that money and spend it on that training. I've already talked to Paul Jaden, and he said, whenever we're ready, he's ready. We can take time to look for other funding sources, but since we have the money and would like to really, you know, kick off the Economic Development Committee and really get things started, the chamber would propose that we use $1,000 of the surplus for that. Other things that we would like to use the money for in 2020 would be continued enrollment in what we consider tourism and development opportunities that we belong to. So, the Jefferson County Tourism Council, the Greater Madison Convention and Visitors Bureau, and the Connect Communities. We've used a portion of the proceeds of your money from this year to pay for, to pay for those. You've, we've done it half and half, half chamber money and half village money, so we'd like to continue to do that. We will be printing another calendar of events and map for 2020, so that would be another expense that we could use the surplus for next year. This year, we would like to print, well, we will have printed new banners for Cambridge Christmas, since it is a community event, practically every volunteer organization within the village is involved in putting on everything for Christmas. We figured that was a good use of the village money for that. And then we have our welcome signs. I am getting, I'm filling out the applications right now. We finally got all the, everything we need to fill out the applications to submit it to the Department of Transportation. But we know that we have exact, exactly the amount we need to buy two signs and have them installed. So, we don't have anything in reserve if there were any overages, either on the installation or the sign makers have been upping the estimate of the costs every year. And if we don't get it in this year, we know they're going to increase the, the cost of the signs again next year. So, that would be, we'd like to have a little money in reserve that we would use towards the Welcome to Cambridge signs. So, those are proposed expenditures of the overages that we aren't able to spend this year.
So, if I'm reading this right, you received $10,000 from us, from the village. You had about $4,000 in expenses, and giving an excess here, at this point, $6,000.
Yes.
All right. And you've, you don't have anything in there for expenses in October, November, and December?
There will be more, the, the banners and there will be payroll expenses, but they're averaging under $200 a month. The most she spent was $200 in June, so it will not be significant expenditure on payroll.
So, it looks like you'll, you'll have about $5,000 of money that you receive from the village in your kitty to go into 2020.
Mm-hmm.
Can you, can you write up a document on how you're planning to spend that $5,000? Because then if you bring that to the next meeting, I can make a motion to say, let's make a motion to approve.
Okay.
But if it's not written out, then it's just sort of nebulous. So, if you can, if you can get that to us and documentation, we can, we can make a motion on that at the next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure really how to approach that, since we have that signed contract with it clearly defined.
We can make an addendum to the contract. I mean, we can do, yeah. And I think that's reasonable. I think everything you're spending them, that you're proposing to spend the money on is reasonable as well. All of those things help the whole village of Cambridge, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't see any issues with, with you spending the money the way that you've laid it out.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody else on the board has concern.
I'm good.
Good?
Have you heard any, anything back as far as how these efforts are paying off?
I know that people are very happy to have the calendar of events in one spot. And a lot of the stuff, you know, that, a lot of the things, like the memberships in the convention bureau and that kind of stuff are not obvious until things start paying off, like the Chamber of Commerce this past year enrolled in Circle Wisconsin, which is a tour, a bus tourism group. And we've gotten two tours so far this year, which doesn't sound like much, but the second tour was because somebody that was on the first tour set up another one. So, we're hoping that it will grow exponentially that way. And Dave Middlestat did all the fundraising to join that organization, so that didn't use chamber or village money to do it. But small things like that are helping, you know, the word get out that the chamber is doing something positive, and that we're really trying to promote the village itself. And we're definitely open to suggestions, but the big thing that we heard in the discussions with Joe Perisi, where, you know, all the business owners that were there were talking about what can we do to help our downtown, bring more people in, that sort of start, stuff, so we really feel strongly about the MADREP collaboration and continuing what we're doing with marketing, the, the Community Guide. They're out selling ads for that right now, so that'll be here, I think, February, March of next year. And we're not paying for that. They're, they're printing it based solely on the amount of money they take in in advertising, so I just have to write all the copy for it.
One last question, real short. How did girls' night out last week?
Oh, it was really good. They had a great time at the vineyards, or the winery, I should say. And I didn't hear any, any negatives that evening, that's for sure. We need to change our marketing plan for that, and we just acquired a new board member that is a marketing person. She works for NBC 15, so she's going to help us with marketing strategy for next year for everything. But we'll, she will get started working on, Small Business Saturday, sorry, and Christmas. So, she'll help us with marketing for that.
All right. Okay, thank you, Karen.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
All right. Moving on, Dean Health Plan Renewal, recommendations from the Personnel Committee, Lisa?
The Dean Renewal, it did go up 4.1%. The only change in the plan is a larger deductible for employees, for families. A thousand dollars up to $1,250 for the families. It went from $2,000 to $2,500. Otherwise, the plans did stay the same. Village side of, you know, and understanding, the quote there is spread out among village, public works, library, water and sewer. Each department pays their own share. For the village, there will be one dependent coming off of it, so it will be a break-even for the village portion this year. But otherwise, a 4.1% increase is not, not too bad compared to what we have seen some past years. The Personnel Committee did recommend just staying with the same plan.
I'll entertain a motion for approval then of the Dean Healthcare Plan Renewal.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, discussion? All right, all those in favor of approval of the Dean Health Plan Renewal, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carry none. Motion carries. All right, move right then into the Delta Dental Renewal part of it.
There is no change. It is the same as the previous year.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the Delta Dental Renewal for 2020.
I'll second that.
All right, discussion? All right, all those in favor of approval of the Dental Renewal Plan that we have, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carries. All right, moving on. Preliminary site plan for the Cambridge Vineyards Apartments and the plan, the recommendation from the Plan Commission.
They're, they're here to talk. If you'd like to see it.
Okay.
We just had presented it to the Plan Commission, and we're looking at doing another building, 28-metres on Kansas Way and Vineyard Road Drive over there. Pretty much the same building that's next door, as far as construction type finishes. The other ones are doing so well as the builders' management of it, so we're just kind of looking to keep going forward, keep doing some progress on them. If you have any questions on construction wise or the...
Is it the same size you used in it, all of?
It's 28-metres.
Okay.
The first building was 20, the next one was 22, this is 28.
And this one's 28, okay.
We didn't increase any two-bedrooms. There's only still six two-bedrooms, 12 one-bedrooms. And then there's like eight efficiency one-bedrooms.
And this is going straight across the street from where the apartments are today? So, they're like behind that sign into that next section?
On your right as you're pulling in.
Yeah, all right, perfect.
Correct.
All right.
And there's plenty of outside parking. We're not bringing the parking down around here. So, when you come up, it'll look very similar to everything, pretty much identical finishes.
But they're beautiful apartment buildings, so, and, yeah. And I think even as, I think it's that level of apartment building that would be expected for a subdivision with the types of houses that are in that subdivision, so I think it's good that you're maintaining that consistency. Mike Finley did come to Plan Commission, and he said, everything is where it needs to be here. He's looked at it all, site plan.
He said it's a little kittywampus on, on the site because of the setbacks.
It's turned a little bit, correct. If you're actually considering that the site, we've got it, when you're coming down the sign, it is right in here, and we've got it turned because we have our setbacks. So, we have, we do have a dumpster location, and the garage will sit over here in the dumpster. On the previous buildings, they were tied to the building, but because of how this is set up, we actually have it back here. And we'll make this look very similar to the building that's on there.
And underground parking again, like the other ones up?
Correct. Parking has never been an issue.
I believe there's 32 underground, and there's 28 surface.
Perfect. Okay.
Didn't you say that you were changing something about the storage down in the, putting it at the back of the?
Yeah, and one of the, we've been keeping it along the outside. Yeah, and one of the, we've been keeping it long, the outside parking.
For these buildings, it'll be slightly larger, but it will look identical.
It's about 26 feet larger than the previous one.
Longer, same width.
Okay. Same appointments, stairways, railings.
Same finishes.
Pop-out air conditioners and brick, the facades.
Exactly.
That would not have been approved by Plan. I said that would not have been approved by Planning Commission.
Okay. And then, oh, go ahead. What's your occupancy rate of the current buildings? And what do you expect for this one?
The first building, at the end of the month, end of October, will have two vacancies, and there's 17 leased in the new building.
The one that hasn't been built yet?
No, the one, the 22 unit, there's 17 leased in there.
Wow, good.
That's really good.
Using water.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Plan Commission and approve the site plan for the Cambridge Vineyard Apartments.
I'll second.
All those in favor of approval of the Preliminary Site Plan that you put forth here, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
Okay, moving on.
That's fine.
We're going to get into unfinished business.
Money again.
We need an update here on our Dane County Park and Ride Grant.
So I have Sarah Ringelman with the Dane County Park, and also Tom Tabest, our, the engineer that helped us apply for the grant. So if there's any questions engineering-wise, he can, he can cover those for you. Just as a little background, as, as you folks all know, but I'll catch everybody up, we applied for a park grant from Dane County Parks. Back in like, was it October or something?
Yeah, fall of 2018.
Right, a year ago, basically. And we were successful in obtaining the full amount. We asked for 209,000 roughly, and that's what we got.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, 209,000, $350 or something. And it's a 50% match, so Dane County provides the half, and then the other half has, we have to provide, and when I say we, we have a committee, that's the Connector Bike Trail Committee, we call ourselves. So that's the group that's kind of organizing this and has to come up with that additional money over a five-year period to make the project happen. In the, the proposal, which you folks have, have all seen, we have money coming from donations and from grants, and then we did earmark from the village, $50,000. So that'd be 5,000, or 10,000 a year for five years. However, our, our overall goal is to reduce that amount as much as possible through fundraising and, and grants. We will be applying for stewardship grant through the DNR, and we've already been in conversations with them, and they think that it's a, it'd be a good project. I mean, there's no guarantee, of course, but they think it'd be a good fit. And if we were, you know, depending on how we write that grant and with assistance from, from the engineering of town and country, it'd be possible that we could get the other 50% there, and then the village would be on the hook for nothing. Again, that's a goal. I don't know if we would reach it or not, but we're gonna, we're gonna work at it. At our last meeting, Mr. Saleoff here made a motion that we raise $25,000 over the next six months, and we approved that, so we kind of set that goal for ourselves through private donations is pretty much right, the way we want to do that. So we're, we're working at it. We applied for a DOT grant, an MLS grant, which is a multi-modal something type of grant, which can fund trails, bike trails, as well as highways and things. However, they, they want to put it toward brand-new projects. And when we researched it, we said, well, we have money from Dane County, but we haven't spent any of it yet. And they said, no, that, so we don't qualify there. So, but, and we, and we tried for a Friends of Dane County grant, and they said they're, they focus more on education and, and parks, and so the trail really wasn't a good fit. So we've been, we've been working at it. We haven't been sitting on our heels. So we feel like the stewardship grant is our best shot, and we're going to continue pushing for the, well, that one is due in May 1st of this coming year. And, and just to, as, as additional background, this trail, this connector from the village up to Glacial Drumland is actually in the village's comprehensive plan from, dated 2025, but it's, it was done, what, 20 years ago? How often do we do those?
2005.
Yeah, so it was 2005. And it just says, as mentioned elsewhere, a key element of this proposal would be to connect the existing trailways along Koshknon Creek, which would create, which would be the Cam Rock Trails, which would create a continuous north-south route through the village. And of course, that part we've already accomplished with the help of another park grant in the village, put up half the funds for that, and so now we have the connector with the safe crossings through the village. And then this route would also serve to connect various parks and offer a linear outdoor recreation corridor. Such corridor will connect the village to regional resources, including Cam Rock Park and the Glacial Drumland State Trail. So, and it goes on beyond that. So, so it's been the goal of the village, really, to, to do this since 2005. It also appears in the Dane County Parks and Open Space Plan, 2018 to 2023. It's shown as item number 24, Glacial Drumland to Cam Rock. So, so it's all, it's, it's something that's been in the works. We think it's an important project for the village, for economic development, and also for connecting portions of the village with the downtown. Right now, you know, we get out to Woodhaven and, and the, and the winery, the Vineyard Development, and they're somewhat isolated from the, the community because of the 12 and 18 and 134. So this would actually provide a connection, a safe trail to those two developments with a safe crossing across 134 as well. So that's part of this project. And so it, it has that function as well. It would also help the, the vineyard and the distillery because the trail goes on that loop that they've already provided out there. And so that would connect people from the village up to those, they could bike up to those facilities, and also coming down from Glacial Drumland, people coming from either Madison or, or Lake Mills could come down and connect, connect to the village. So it has, I think it has a lot of benefits, and it, you know, that's why we're working to do this. So I'll share these with the committee, and Bob, you can add what you'd like.
I'd like to, excuse me, introduce Sarah Riggelman from the Dane County Parks Department. And Sarah, if you'd just give us your message, I'd so appreciate it because it's very impactful.
Yeah, so what Steve said, this was one of the projects that we funded last year in 2018 with our grant program. It was one of four that we funded. Actually, this project received the most grant funding, and I'd say it was highest on our list in, in terms of wanting to see this, this trail happen. Like Steve said, it's been in our Parks and Open Space Plan, the villages. There's also been a lot of planning done for many years, and it's a really important trail connection for a lot of reasons. So I know that our Park Commission, our county board supervisors, we're all really excited to select this project for, for funding, and, you know, we, we did, we understood that additional fundraising needed to happen, and we were just hoping that our, our grant, the $209,000, would really be that, you know, seed money that would then move the project forward and, you know, just really providing that opportunity for the project to, to take off and take the next steps in the planning, design, construction, and, and, you know, really, once you have that initial grant, it's a lot easier to seek other grants more successfully and outside funds. And so at this point, what we need to do is just move ahead with the actual grant agreement. And so what that does is, I've had some correspondences with, with Lisa about signing that, and really, that contract just allows us as the county to encumber those funds through our purchase order process, and then that money is always set aside and secured for this project. And we always, trail projects, we understand, take a lot of time to plan and make happen, so it's a, it's a four, four-year grant period, so plenty of time to, to come up with the funds. There isn't anything in terms of monetary, you know, commitment that the village needs to make at this time or signing the grant contract. You can start using some of our grant money. I think we've suggested using $5,000 of our grant money, the $5,000 that came from Jefferson that I think they're, they're willing to put towards it to kind of start with the design work and also apply for some of the, the DNR stewardship grant, which I think is a really, is gonna, you know, give you, probably give you to that another 5%. I've seen that happen a lot with the projects that I've worked on anyway, where the, where the county funds are matched by DNR stewardship funding pretty successfully. And in terms of the grant agreement, too, it's always one of those things that, you know, if the project, if something goes wrong at whatever point, you know, we just come together and it, it's, it's, it's not a big deal. It's not like we're gonna punish you or anything, you know, related to that, as long as we see that there's some progress being made and everybody's working diligently to move things forward, we're here to support you and to be that partner. And often, you can also get an extension on the agreement, too, if you're not able to, if you grant next year and you want to reapply, usually we can, we can give you an extension with, with our grant as well.
So let me, let me try to get this straight for the trustees.
Yep.
So the way you would disperse money, we, we had hoped to have the $5,000 in hand for this evening. Do you have it? No. But we had hoped to have the 5,000 from Jefferson County, and we had hoped, but I, frankly, I think they're waiting for you, and I'm, and the ask here is if you could appropriate $5,000, then we would take that 10,000 and add it to the $3,800, which is the balance in the account, and it would then turn into seven, approximately $7,000. And with that $17,000, we could engage Town and Country to do some of the design work and to provide the materials for promoting this project. The $70,000 that you matched for the first park grant, you know, was enhanced because, or for this grant, was enhanced because Town and Country, we were able to pay them to, to put the, all the maps together and all the design work together so that we could present it to the county, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but that helped that project be successful. And here, so we're asking again to have a little kitty of money to get Town and Country going. The only way that the county will release is when that money is available and there's an invoice that is paid, and then they will release their matching amount. So with, with $8,000, $800, we can double that, and we can get Town and Country going. They're not going to charge us for the proposals to the DOT if they do that one and to the DNR. But to have these materials and to have the design work in hand is going to help our job at the committee promote this project. Maybe Town and Country, maybe, Tommy, you want to add something to that? Correct me if I'm misspeaking.
Well, that's a good point, and I think if you can show that you have some, some of the design work already done, that's only going to help you with, with consideration for awarding more grants. My only sense of urgency here is that it could snow anytime. If we could get some survey work done before a snowfall, that certainly would help with the design process. If that done this fall, you have to give us the winter to, to work on it and to affect these grants and further things along. So Town and Country is more than happy to work, you know, ahead on things as far as we can, and, you know, in the past, we've been willing to hold some invoices just to get by until the next source of funds would come in, and we're going to continue to work that way with the village and with the committee here to make things continue as well.
I'd like to point out, too, the, the initial work that Town and Country did was funded by private donations. The vineyards, you know, Bill and Frank put up, I believe, $5,000, and the foundation put up 5,000, and the distillery, Travis put up, I believe, I don't know. Yeah, so, so, yeah, if you want to mention anything, but, but, you know, they have skin in the game and, and, you know, basically put, put money where their mouth was. So we appreciate that, and I think the quality of work that Town and Country did helped us land the grant with, with Dane County Parks. I think they saw that we've, you know, we're not just out there dreaming of something. We've got a solid plan. We've analyzed a number of routes and eliminated ones that weren't practical, picked the best route, did some preliminary work on it. So, so I think that really, and Sarah, maybe you could mention that, but it, or verify that, but yeah, I think, I think having your ducks in a row really helps get, you know, get the grants. So, so we want to continue with that. And, and, correct me if I'm wrong, though, signing this does not commit the village to any funds?
So there's really two things before us tonight.
Well?
From this committee.
Okay.
The first one is, let's get the grant signed.
Yep.
So do we agree with signing the grant? Signing the grant, there is no monetary commitment we are making in doing that. There is still the understanding from your bike committee that you guys will raise those funds.
Right. You, the village is agreeing to act as fiscal agent.
Correct.
But that's, you know, to hold the funds, but that's it.
And we are not making a commitment to any kind of funding at this point.
Correct.
Then your second ask tonight is to see if we do have some dollars that we could commit to this so that you guys could get started with the next level of design.
Knowing that that would be reimbursed from the grant.
Well, it's a match.
Yep. Yep, so the idea is there would be $5,000 used with our grant money, and then the $5,000 with, from Jefferson, right? So we would consider the Jefferson money the match for that initial cost for the design and engineering. Does that make sense?
It's probably going to take more than $5,000.
Yeah, I'm just giving the example, though. Yeah, so.
And I can just, and we'll get back to confirming your, your second part. Bob and I did meet with Jefferson County, and I spoke with Ben last Friday, Thursday, and he's in budgets, so they, he could not get away. I asked him to release that $5,000, and so he's going to look at that. I think that will happen. It hasn't come in yet, I take it. But I was having him send it right to our office.
That's good news, because before that meeting, they were saying that the parks, Jefferson County parks, had to come up with that either out of other programs or through fundraising. And I knew they, they, they are planning a fundraiser at the winery in the spring. But, so that's good news that, that they're willing to front that money before that's raised.
Right. I feel comfortable in saying it was a very positive meeting. You know, that, that it seemed possibly forthcoming, but the cash in the bank is what's going to count, and they're, frankly, I think, you know, frankly, I think they're waiting to see how, how you, whether you do the two things that Paula mentioned, accepting the grant, entering into the agreement without a fiscal obligation, and second, whether you're willing to put a little seed money into this so we can get going.
Barb, do we have any money left? What's left in the budget, the parks budget, or anything from that from this year?
I can't tell you off the top of my head. Those are some things that I'll be looking at tomorrow while I'm working on the budget stuff, but right now I have, I can't pull it off the top of my head.
There wouldn't have been 5,000 extra, you know, the budget was set up for equipment, for the playgrounds and so forth. There wouldn't be.
Well, I under, I understand that. I'd want to know what is there, because I know they're asking for five, but if we had 2,000, then we could start with a 2,000. So I just wanted to know what, if there was any money left in anything that could be used from a park perspective for that and where, where we were setting for the year.
Public Works. If we would have known that was coming, we would have had those figures, but I didn't know that request. One question, the stewardship grant and so forth, does that have to be applied for by the village technically, not the subcommittee?
Correct.
So that's part of it, the village buy-in. So that's part of it, the village buy-in, because we'd have to be the name on these other grants. The subcommittee can't buy for them, the village would be the name on the.
As it was with the park grant.
Yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve and sign the Park and Ride Bicycle Trail Grant Agreement.
I will second that.
Any further discussion?
I was gonna say, no, we do lots more discussion if you want. I mean, it's not, we're not committing ourselves to anything monetarily at this point. I think, I think it's, as Steve mentioned and Bob mentioned, and, I'm sorry, what was it?
Sarah.
Sarah, and Sarah mentioned, there are so many benefits to the community from this, and by connecting us, and it was, it is part of our long-term plan, so I, and there was, there's absolutely no way we'd be able to do this without the grant. So to me, walking away from this money would be a detriment to the community. So that's why I think we should proceed with it.
If I understood correctly, it's to create a purchase order, to encumber the funds, so that the money is there if we raise that much.
Yep, yep.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second for approval of the grant, to sign off on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that carries.
Then, Mark, I'd like to propose that the staff take a look at for our next meeting where we might be able to come up with some funds to provide some seed money, and what that amount of that seed money might be, depending on what buckets it's coming out of, and I think we should take that up at the next meeting, since we're not really prepared to make that kind of decision today.
Okay.
I would just ask.
Just discuss that.
You.
On the agenda specifically for audit, but you'll see all the numbers there.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Have you asked the Village of Rockdale about putting any funds toward it?
They haven't yet.
Because they're, they would benefit from it as well.
This is true.
They're at the end of the trail, and.
Right.
So you might want to ask them for.
What about Christiana?
Mm-hmm.
Who is?
Christiana.
Are we just gonna leave them out of the, out of the loop?
I don't, well, Christiana has come up, you know, as a potential partner in this, but where we're at right now, it's just village, so.
Well, I mean, I think, I think the fundraising efforts of that committee should be reaching out to every community.
Yes.
Oakland, I mean, it goes through Oakland and can certainly benefit some of the businesses that are in bars or hotels, or, I'm sorry, bed and breakfasts, or even Airbnbs, that might be around Lake Ripley, but all of those can benefit from this Connector Bike Trail. So I think it would behoove the committee to reach out to all of the different areas.
People with big pockets.
Yes, and municipalities.
That's a good suggestion, yep.
All right, so we'll look at it, and we will be talking, and then we can get back.
Then we can make an informed decision, and, you know, we do have that, where we need to fiscally take a look at everything before we vote on it, so.
All right.
And I know there's a dollar amount involved, but I would like to know where that bucket of money is coming from, and then I would assume if we're putting in this seed money, either the committee reimburses us when they have money back, or it goes towards, you know, we keep track of what we're giving to that committee, even though we've made no commitment.
Can I, Mr. President, can I just add a couple of details? I wanted to, you know Frank and Bill, and they've been really good partners on this, and I don't know if you gentlemen want to say anything or address this trail, the benefit that it would be to you or not?
We obviously think it's a great idea. We put in the bike path as part of the development, as for recreation and that whole idea of that bike-type of lifestyle, and having a connector, bringing people down from the north, what I call it, you know, would be a great benefit, not only for the distillery and the winery, but also bringing people into Cambridge that would never come that way.
Sure.
Yep.
You know, we, Frank and I obviously thought it was beneficial for our development and the village. As Steve mentioned, you know, we put up the money to start with, to get the initial design work, or whatever it was.
Yeah, great.
Okay. Well, here's, I can see someone behind the cabinet, that we're very committed to the bike trail and all the things that it does for Cambridge. I mean, that's been part of the plan, they want, but I wanted to point out, I heard the comment about the Jefferson having an event at the winery. We have a lot of vacant time that's available for fundraising. We could do bike rides out in the field, we have a gazebo out there, we've got a new park out there, we can use the winery facility to host people. We do this for some other civic events, and they're very successful. So somebody say, how can we come up with ten or fifteen thousand dollars, something, you could do that, and one of the evening, you know. We do it as kind of a donation if we're not otherwise busy, but you would have to come up with the volunteers to help run it, so we can't afford to hire a bunch of people and pay them and get nothing for it, so. But there's ways, there's creative ways we can, we can do some fundraising, so if there's two thousand dollars left over in the park budget and you need three more, boy, we could do that in the Sunday afternoon, you know, and just have these things done, so keep those in mind, and we're just, we're committed to the project. I also told the committee, too, that, you know, with the property, I'm not sure what the final route is, but if it's going around the winery property there, you know, we're all in for granting easements or letting the asphalt go down, those sort of things, the bikes don't have to ride the highways and those sort of things, as they wanted to do for the park, so.
I think, I think there already is an easement.
We're there, so.
Okay.
Yeah, there is, there is.
Thanks, Frank, good Frank.
Thank you.
Just one more, one more detail, sorry, you guys, I know you got an agenda, but there's been volunteers coming to me and to us and talking about the next phase beyond State Farm Road. So there's already two property owners that would make a connection, and then there's a third property owner, which is potentially the new solar farm, and I've talked to Invergy, and they're very interested. I mean, they didn't commit, they didn't, you know, they're coming to our meeting on Thursday. By the way, we're having a meeting here at nine-thirty in the morning, you're welcome to come, but they're gonna come because they're very bike enthusiasts, and they think possibly something could be worked out. Now, they're not the property owner, but they will be leasing, in their phase two, they will be leasing a big chunk of that land north of State Farm Road, so there's a huge amount of possibility for the future. I know, I know some of you brought up the issue of what do we do when we get to State Farm Road? Well, it's happening.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Everybody.
Thank you for passing that motion.
Thank you.
For being here. For your time.
Okay, moving on. Item number B here. We retain a motion for this, somebody want to read this one out?
Do you want to, I know we'll be coming back in after, but do you want to do meeting announcements and so forth first?
Sure, we can do that. Upcoming meetings, economic development, we are working on scheduling a meeting. Audit and Finance is gonna meet October twenty-fourth, as well as the twenty-eighth. Plan Commission will convene on November eleventh, Village Board back here, November twelfth, and the Library Board on the nineteenth, Water and Sewer on the nineteenth.
Oh, that's.
And the Village Board is back here on the twenty-sixth. And we have one Village Board meeting in December, correct?
Yep, and we'll have an agenda item to, to cancel the last one.
I think the Library Board meeting is wrong, because we should be the second Wednesday.
The second.
We were an anomaly this last month.
This time.
Yeah, so it should, that should be the second Wednesday.
Twelve.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want me to get through the referrals to staff, future agenda items?
Yep.
Yeah, we can do that, well.
Okay. Noxious weeds, audit, Melster site update, Cambridge Tree Project proclamation, the budget, and the foundation request. That's all coming at us.
All right.
All right.